In public hearing regarding amendment of boundaries of the local development finance authority, Kirk Blue, do you have some background to read on this?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, on August 29th, 1988, the city commission created a local development finance authority, or LDFA, pursuant to Public Act 281 of 1986. The boundary was established to be the River Park complex, the industrial park near Presque Isle. An LDFA is a state-recognized mechanism that local units of government can utilize for economic development purposes, such as creating jobs and increasing tax base. The state allows the municipality to have only one LDFA. The city and Northern Michigan University have been approached by a smart zone district established by the cities of Houghton and Hancock and Michigan Tech University to become a satellite smart zone district. The purpose of such a district is to help eliminate the conditions of unemployment, underemployment, and joblessness, and to promote economic growth in the city. The goal of the smart zone is to attract high-tech and similar-type jobs, and to be able to utilize special funding opportunities in order to attract such jobs. In order to accomplish the purposes of the satellite district, an LDFA must be established. Since the city already has an LDFA, the next step would be for the city to amend the boundaries to include the entire city of Marquette. This is a necessary condition to be successful in applying for and obtaining designation as a satellite smart zone district. This action would also put the city in better position to obtain special funding for economic development when such opportunities arise in the future. The tax mileage rates and other fees will not increase as a result of this action. The current city limits will also not change as a result of this action. In order to amend the LDFA boundaries, a public hearing must be conducted. This public hearing was scheduled at the March 31st, 2014 city commission meeting by the adoption of a resolution of intent. At this time, only the public hearing can be held and to record citizen comment. After a 60-day waiting period, the city commission can then adopt a resolution which will amend the LDFA boundaries. The earliest this resolution could be acted on would be at the June 30th, 2014 city commission meeting. And fiscal effects done by this action, recommendation, conduct a public hearing regarding amendment of boundaries of the local development finance authority, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'll now open the public hearing on the local development finance authority, the boundary adjustments. Any citizens wishing to address the commission?
Hi, Gary Simpson, Chief Financial Officer, City of Marquette, 300 West Barriga Avenue. Really have nothing to add, what was already in the background. I would just like to reiterate some things in talking to quite a few citizens the past couple of weeks, and it was very good to talk to everybody. The prime question most everybody asks is, what does this mean to the average taxpayer? And it means really nothing. We aren't going to raise the tax mileage. We aren't annexing property. This has nothing to do with the Third Street situation, has nothing to do with the hospital possibly relocating. All we're trying to do is beef up the city's resume, try to put us in a better position to attract special funding opportunities, to bring jobs into the city, and hopefully we can increase the tax base. So that's all we're trying to do. There is no action to take tonight, it'll be June 30 before we can take any further action. And there's been quite a few people helping us out through this. Scott McInnes, who I will introduce, he's the trying-to-retire city manager for Houghton, and because of this, he's not able to retire just yet, but he drove all the way down just to be here, so he's really kind of an expert on not only LDFA's, but smart zone districts, and he can give you a few words since he drove all this way. So here's Scott McInnes.
I just wanted to give you a few brief comments on Houghton and Hancock, Michigan Tech Smart Zone. As Gary told you, I stepped on as city manager, February 1st of the city of Houghton. I am still on the M-Tech Smart Zone Board. I was part of the committee that spent about a year and a half applying for the Smart Zone status. I think we got it around 2002. I will tell you that the impact and the success that this has had is far greater than anything we dreamed when we put this thing together. One of our main goals in Houghton is to attract young professionals to our community. That brings additional tax base and increases the population. If you look at the population of Houghton, I think we had the largest increase in the UP for the 2010 census. Marquette, I think, was right behind us. But it's really a key to keep a community going for economic development is to attract young professionals. And also, our goal was to keep the Michigan Tech students working and living in our community. And this, the impact that this has had on our community, and just the atmosphere that we have, has really helped us do that. I will tell you that we have, over the, since 2002, we've helped create over 400 jobs in our little community, in Houghton Hancock in the area. Our Smart Zone budget is currently at $1.4 million, and we receive millions of dollars of state help for our Smart Zone. I will be around if anybody has any questions, and feel free to call me back to the city of Houghton if you have any questions or concern. We're very interested in helping Marquette become a satellite. We spent a lot of time over at Sault Ste. Marie getting them their Smart Zone. We think it's great for economic development for the whole UP. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McInnes. Anyone else wishing to address?
I'll go next. My name is Rod Lysak, 1913 Bancroft Street, here in Marquette. Two apologies first, I have a nasty cough. It's asthma, it's not contagious, so don't worry about that. Second of all, my information may be a little dated. My history before State Farm, I was a community development director in the city of Marshall. We were one of the very first communities that implemented an LDFA in our community. And at that time, the LDFA purpose was really designed specifically for business development, industrial parks, business center, and yeah, I think that'd be a perfect use for the Smart Zone. My concern is, you're encompassing the entire city. And I'm surprised that other organizations haven't stepped up and dramatically opposed this. Because if I recall, the whole purpose is, the number-one purpose is to capture any increased tax dollars. Essentially, the way I understand it is, tax base is frozen. Any additional gain in taxes would go to an independent, non-elected board, appointed by the council, to decide what to do with that money. And when you freeze, if I recall, it freezes all those organizations that have taxing authority in the city of Marquette, such as the schools, such as the public library, as well as the senior center and every other organization. And if the intent is for this organization to capture residential tax increases, residential development, all those other things, I believe the act would allow you to hire your own work crews, to eliminate city employees. Now, that may not be your intent, and I'm not suggesting that's your intent, but those of us who have developed in Marquette and own businesses in Marquette realize that your intent today doesn't really matter, because your predecessors are going to follow the rules of the law, which gives them as much rights and as many restrictions that the laws allow. So when I read this, in my notification, my zoning notification, it threw up a huge red flag. This could be a huge impact on the community. Yeah, you're right, my taxes as a resident will not go up, but any increased tax dollars that my place generates, for all those other taxing organizations, will not go to them, it'll go to an independent board. You can make arrangements with those organizations to be nice to them, but I don't believe the law requires that. So without knowing other information, and in addition, I have bylaws that says that the original resolution and the LDFA resolution of intent was attached, but it's not. So how can I tell what new laws are? I mean, I would think, in a public hearing, if you say they're attached on the agenda, they will be attached. So I urge the council, I urge the community, I urge every taxing organization in the community, the employees at the city, need to take a strong look at this. Your intent may be good, the Smart Zone is a perfect purpose, but why does it need to encumber every residential, every single part of the city? The DDA is essentially a tax finance organization. They have a defined district. Why didn't you allow them to encompass, take over the entire city? Because that's not its purpose, and I don't believe the purpose of an LDFA is to capture tax dollars away from the city to an independent board that you guys appoint, which will have less public input. I don't believe the board has to be, they're not voted by the public like you guys are representing them. So I'm really worried about this and the long-term impact on our community. Smart Zone, encompass the Smart Zone, I would be all for it, but you're not. You're encompassing every residential community, every residential section of this town, the entire boundaries. And I'm concerned you're setting a terrible precedence that those of us will have to live with 10 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lysak.
Yes? The sound issues that we've been having seem to have been cleared up. I just wanted to confirm from the commissioners that...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that microphone on, Mr. Pence?
Says it's on.
Okay.
I'm Steve Pence from 453 East Michigan Street in Marquette. Mr. Mayor and honorable commissioners, thank you for allowing us, for allowing me and the rest of us to appear tonight. I appear on my own behalf as a single county commissioner from District 1, which encompasses two precincts of Marquette, and an area north of there and west of there. But our board chairman, Mr. Corkin, is here, and so is Scott Urbish. We're here because, as a whole, we have some of the concerns that Mr. Lysak has, but I don't think we fear the draconian things he suggests, but we have questions. As you know, the county government has always supported development. We give a significant grant every year to Lake Superior Partnership for that purpose. We like job creation, we like the idea of the Smart Zone, the diversity. I've been to Houghton enough, and I know the good things that have happened up there with their Smart Zone. The thing that got our attention and county government and sent us asking questions to people smarter than us at state government and elsewhere, was the fact suggested by Mr. Lysak that it covers the whole city. And yet, we have the idea that it's not the intent to do what Mr. Lysak fears, but rather to create perhaps TIFs or Smart Zones within the city in different spots. So the question is, how much of county government tax base will be captured, which could affect, with the rising population, rising demands, our ability to pay for increased services? We asked questions of the Treasury, and we got answers that were incomplete, and actually more questions. What Treasury wrote to us was that the city of Marquette and what they're proposing has a lot of moving parts. If they have an LDFA with boundaries co-terminus with those of the city, they can have multiple TIF districts in the LDFA. One of those districts could be a Smart Zone if they get the satellite designation, which Mr. McInnes told us about. And so if there's a limitation and an opportunity for us to opt out of some things, that's a good thing, but we understand that we don't get to opt out of Smart Zone districts. We don't get to keep some of our tax base if, in fact, we think we need it. So Mr. Mills of Treasury goes on to say, so if your question is to the capture of county taxes, the expanded LDFA can capture all county levies except debt. The county commission can opt out of having county taxes captured from the expanded area within 60 days of a hearing, expanding the LDFA. If an MDC, which is the next Michigan Development Commission, creates an LDFA, the county commission can opt out of that one, maybe, maybe. So we come here tonight with more questions than answers, and I know it's early in the process, and we're just wondering what are the implications of this for our taxes and for the taxes of the school districts? And I have a thought, as we sat back there and listened and considered this, and one of my questions is, how much would be, how much of the city would actually be proposed as a Smart Zone? And if we opt out within 68, 60 days of the LDFA, can we and must we opt out of any sub-designations thereunder? And then, since we have more questions than answers, and don't fear a draconian tension by this commission, but maybe unintended consequences, we're wondering if perhaps at some point, somebody from the city could present to our county board as a whole, since only two commissioners are here, and we speak mostly of a general concern, but we certainly have, this issue came up before our last board meeting, but we took no action and we did not vote on it. So again, I applaud you for your efforts at job development, but we have significant concerns about a tax base and our ability to meet our obligations to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pence.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate I address some of this?
Yes, it would.
I think there's a big misconception. What we're proposing to do with the LDFA is exactly what we did with the Brownfield Authority, where the entire city's a Brownfield district, and then out of that, you can carve your little TIF districts as you need. Same thing would happen with the LDFA, that's why we want to designate the whole city as an LDFA, not to baseline and freeze out the whole city taxes. I mean, I wouldn't be standing here talking to you, that's what we were planning, but there's a little more flexibility with Smart Zone TIFs, where we wouldn't capture the full amount, we would just tell the state we're going to capture up to X amount of dollars. And then, early projections are showing that the state would contribute almost $3 to every $1 the city contributes. County taxes would be zero that we capture, we're only, we'd only be eligible to capture the technically 50% of the school taxes. Schools would not be harmed, because what we capture from the schools, the state will reimburse the schools 100%. So we're trying to make very clear and sure that nobody is harmed, the Brownfields, DDAs, schools, county, library, nobody's harmed. So that's the direction we're going. So this is why we want to set up the entire city as an LDFA, so that we can take advantage of not only Smart Zone opportunities, but any other opportunities that may come before us. So hopefully that answers questions. If not, people know where to find me.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Anyone else wishing to address the commission on the LDFA Smart Zone?
I'm Richard Anderson, resident, 407 East Michigan Street. And I can also add a little perspective on this. I've been working with the Smart Zone for about the last year and a half, primarily in partnering some of the technologies that have been coming out of Michigan Tech University with some of the commercialization know-how and companies and seed capital investors that are in this area. And over a period of about a year, year and a half, we've had some success in putting together financial packages and business mentorships, partnerships that have led us to understand that there's really a strong connection between the intellectual property and innovation that's coming out of one of the nation's leading engineering firms, and the training capabilities at Northern Michigan University, and the expertise in life sciences from Michigan State University and some of the major corporations here. And there's sort of been a kind of a confluence of events that have led us, at least not originally, to the conclusion that we could really set up a Smart Zone, but because of recent legislation with the state of Michigan, there are three communities in the entire state that will be eligible for a satellite designation. There is a, there is an advantage to a satellite in that the state, by selecting up to three satellite partners, the state will reimburse the city schools and the state school taxes for the capture. We have, we've designed the Smart Zone to capture up to four mils of city taxes. That capture of up to four mils of the increase, the increment of increase in taxes over a period of time, would be met by three-to-one match earmarked for the city of Marquette for the entire 15 years. So for every dollar that is raised by the city, it would be met by a $3 match from the state. And I would say that the, this is really, this is really a potential partnership between three universities, Michigan State, Northern Michigan University, and Michigan Tech. One of the most successful Smart Zones in the state of Michigan, the Houghton Hancock Smart Zone, which is really only number two to Ann Arbor in their success of creating jobs, investment, and technology companies. And it bridges the commercialization know-how and talent and training capacity in the Marquette region that has been emerging over the last five, 10 years, with companies that have now been successful here in the city that have grown globally. The regional partnership assembles sort of a critical mass and diversity of private and public sector partners to accelerate regional technology commercialization, and is supported through a variety of programs to support that. The leadership of Northern Michigan University and the College of Human Medicine at Michigan State University have expressed a willingness to partner with a satellite Smart Zone, and have participated in several planning sessions. And the, and there are private sector leaders representing medical devices, healthcare, natural resources, energy, information technology, social media, food processing, have agreed to lead technology clusters, and you'll be hearing from a few of those people tonight. So we look forward to this dialogue with the city of Marquette, and over the period of months to plan properly the way in which we can structure what really is a regional partnership that puts Marquette at the center of, I think, a lot of exciting capabilities in creating technology companies in a variety of sectors. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Good evening, I'm Bob Esslinger from Northern Michigan University. I'm the Special Assistant to the President for Economic Development, and as well, I'm the Director of the Center for Innovation and Industrial Technologies at the university. I'm here this evening as a show of support from the university for the effort to bring a Smart Zone satellite to the city of Marquette. We believe that this will be a unique opportunity for NMU students, staff, and faculty to collaborate with the city, with the M-Tech Smart Zone, and with Michigan Tech, as well as the region at large, and we'd like, we'd like you to know that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Esslinger.
Hi, Carl Lindquist with the Superior Watershed Partnership. We just wanted to express our support for the Smart Zone, not so much focusing on all the economic benefits, but there are also a number of environmental benefits in partnering with Michigan Tech and what Hancock's been able to do over the last decade or so, and other of the regional partners that make up their Smart Zone. And, you know, last year, the city hosted the Great Lakes Cities Conference, had over 100 U.S. and Canadian cities here, and one of the reasons Marquette was selected was because of some of the innovative Great Lakes protection work that the city's been doing. And next week, a number of collaborative projects that the city has going will be featured at the statewide green infrastructure project or conference in Lansing. And what we're finding with Great Lakes funders at state level, federal level, and private foundations, is that they're looking for more innovative approaches to Great Lakes issues, environmental issues in general, that can be replicated with other communities. And the idea of partnering closer with tech and Houghton and other communities is just, seems to make sense to us, and so we see it as kind of taking us, the whole city of Marquette, a kind of a quantum leap forward, so we're supportive for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindquist.
Mike Quayle, 1700 Mildred Avenue, Marquette. I had some prepared comments tonight, but I'm not going to bore yous with them now. I learned more tonight in this last few minutes, listening to these gentlemen that have come from other areas, have worked with these things, than what you folks provided to the citizens of Marquette in the mailing that we got that told us virtually nothing. I have to commend our mayor, Robert Neme. After I got the notice, I tried to understand it, didn't understand it. I had some other folks call me, and they didn't understand it. So I got ahold of Mr. Neme, and he was kind enough to return my phone call, and at least we were able to, be able to understand that it was the Smart Zone that we were talking about here. I personally don't have a big problem with adopting a Smart Zone here in Marquette. Sounds like there's a lot of positive things to it. My concern is this, is that I don't know how many of yous have looked and read the Act. It's 27 pages long. I have read it. And like Mr. Lysak says, once you adopt that, you're not just adopting the good things and the intentions of what city staff or city commissioners or city managers are talking about here tonight. There's nothing definitive. You have provided us nothing definitive, except that law, that Act, that yous are anticipating adopting. There's a lot of bad baggage with that particular Act, in my opinion. There's the good things that have been brought up here tonight, but there's a lot of bad things, wide-brush sweeping issues in there, including condemnation of property in the idea of economic growth. And I don't know that that's going to be real acceptable to the citizens of city of Marquette. I understand it's a reality, and that in the state and the nation, but I don't think it's going to be real acceptable. I think we heard the other public hearing tonight, there was some concerns about hearings and so on and so forth, the information given out, and it sounds like you tried to do that with that particular issue. I would be willing to listen and hear what yous have done to date on this particular issue. To the best of my knowledge, there was some talk back a while, probably a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, about a Smart Zone. From my recollection of it, the city manager was tasked with moving forward with this and trying to get some information on it, and that I don't recall hearing in that, that we had to have this particular district established. Didn't know that we had one established back in 88. I somewhat question if it's really even a valid authority at this point. Yous haven't used it since, I think, 1988 or 1990. You have no board, that I'm aware of, that's an active board that is required by that Act, and so I really don't know, and I'm not an attorney, and I'm hoping that Mr. Keith has looked at this and can answer some of these questions. But I guess to make a long story short, what I would propose is, you've got, I think they said, 60 to 90 days to act on this thing. I think you really should have some forums on this thing. I would like to take and see a show of hands as to how many people here tonight are here because of this Smart Zone and because of this tax. Quite a few. So I think all these people have some issues, and I really don't think in this particular thing, and I may be wrong, but I don't think yous did a good job of advising the citizens of just what this was about. And I would encourage you to maybe have a forum, or a couple of forums where people can come forth, and have a working session, and that where you can exchange information back and forth. Not necessarily a formal situation, although I was very glad to see what Not necessarily a formal situation, although I was very glad to see what yous did with the last public hearing to suspend the rules and be able to answer some of those questions. But I really think that's needed in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quail.
Frank Jeff Berito. Three fifty East Ridge, Marquette. I also did not understand the letter, so I emailed the city manager's office and was told that the agenda would be out soon, because even in advance of that, I had tried to locate some information on the city website, and absolutely nothing that I could find anyway was available, and it didn't seem as though the manager's office was able to provide anything either, other than what's on your agenda supplement. And I then wrote back to the city manager's office that since that letter had been mailed to every taxpayer in town, I believe it would have been fit to have had a lot more information on hand so that people could have found out a lot more before the publication of the agenda, and even the information in your agenda supplement is somewhat confusing.
Thank you, Mr. Berito. Anyone else?
Jesse Schramm. I just wanted to point out that the two issues we've had tonight have both complained of poor communication. I agree that the, this financing district was, you know, the government officials do this stuff every day, and Mr. Stonehouse pointed out that maybe us that spoke on the first thing were living under a rock or something to miss the communication, but I didn't appreciate the criticism, because when you elect officials, you trust them to make decisions based, because you can't pay attention to every detail. So in regards to the first issue, the same thing, they didn't ever, that I saw, disclose an address. They only notified people within three hundred feet. There was nothing in the letter that said that it was a dump site as is this. I mean, if they would have clarified, you guys could have saved yourselves an hour and a half tonight just with some clarification in these, in these letters that go out. So I'd urge the commission to look at the communication lines of the city, and when they send these letters out, to eliminate some of these discriminating facts that waste a lot of everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schramm.
My name is Craig Miller, and I live up in Shyras Hills, ten thirteen Aloe Way Road. I support the smart zone, all the concerns that some people have about possible condemnation of property. The only thing I can say is that this should be approached very carefully and judiciously, not just because of the backlash in public opinion. Also, there is that pesky document called the state constitution, which back in two thousand and six, voters approved an amendment which prohibits the use of eminent domain for anything other than a government or a public project. You can't use it to make way for a private development. And you have to, whatever authority is trying to use eminent domain has to prove that it is a public project, and it's not going to be transferred to the, to a private developer. And under the amendment, any person, property owner, that has his property condemned and taken, has to be reimbursed one hundred and twenty-five percent of market value of that property. So if somebody owns four hundred thousand dollar piece of land, the authority would have to add you up about a half a mil to pay for it. That's in the, that's in that constitutional amendment that was passed in, I believe, two thousand and six. I'm sure the city attorney can probably elaborate on that in a little more detail than I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else willing, wishing to address the commission?
Hello, my name is Lee Francisco, seventeen fourteen Gray Street. I'm the CEO and founder of nine oh six technologies, and I'm here to support Marquette's smart zone as a leader of a technology cluster. I think Marquette's smart zone will offer numerous opportunities for local job growth, innovation, collaborations, and recognitions throughout the state and hopefully the country, all of which can lead into promising futures for local residents, college graduates, and entrepreneurs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco.
I'm Brian Dixon from one-two-three Chocole River Trail in the Chocole Township. I'm here on behalf of myself and testifying in favor of the amendment, in particular as it relates to the smart zone development. I'm a sports medicine physician here in Marquette, and working for the last five or six years collaboratively with a variety of different institutions, particularly Northern Michigan and Michigan State University, to try to increase our research infrastructures related to healthcare and the combination of the smart zone and the work that's being done up at tech, what we're trying to accomplish on a clinical basis, and the regional outreach of healthcare melds very well. I strongly believe this is going to be a very critical step for us, transitioning from local healthcare to a destination center where we not only can attract patients to come for high-level care, but also can attract people who want to live and work here, jobs that are created. And I think it fits very well with the spirit of the UP and our cultural lifestyle. I think it's important to think about partnering with the great research capabilities up at tech and some of the more practical, hands-on stuff we have here in Marquette in terms of orthopedic device development, hands-on practical training with the medical school, nursing school, athletic training, exercise science. I think there's tremendous potential to be had here. Certainly was interested to hear people's concerns, and I appreciate that, but I think to move forward as a community, you also have to trust each other. You have to be willing to trust that we're going to look out for each other's interests and do what's right for the community in general. And I think that's the spirit I've always found since I've lived here. It's one of the reasons that I stay and live here and make my home here, is the sense of progress and potential that's available. And I see this smart zone as a really important step to continuing that wonderful trajectory that you all put us on as leaders of this community. So, again, in strong support of the smart zone and be happy to answer any questions or be available from a healthcare standpoint in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Good evening. My name is Dan Weber. I'm not a resident of Marquette, but I am a resident of the Marquette business community. I'm a board member of the M-Tech Smart Zone and have been since last November. I was the former CEO of Pioneer Surgical, and just want to share a few comments about how important and how impactful community support can be on a company, including leveraging the universities that are a part of this community between Houghton Hancock and Marquette with, with Northern and Tech. As you know, Pioneer enjoyed significant community support, and that support was there to help it get started, as well as help it foster its continued growth, as well as the universities of both Michigan Tech and Northern Michigan. Fully one-half of the employees of Michigan Tech, or of Pioneer Surgical, the former Pioneer Surgical, came from Northern Michigan and Michigan Tech in various capacities, including communications, accounting, research and development, engineering, quality, and operations. So it does, it does lend itself well to a location for commercial, commercialization of technologies, the Marquette community does. Those people generated over a period of twenty-plus years, well over a hundred and fifty patents and probably eighty or eighty-five patents that were pending, at least at the time of my departure. So they generated a significant amount of intellectual property that then the company turned into commercial products, and over its history, it was well over thirty thousand commercial products since inception. That's a significant capability within this, within this community. My affiliation with Michigan, or the M-Tech Smart Zone has been short, but the, the impact that that, or the M-Tech Smart Zone has on the Houghton and Hancock communities is significant. You can see it in their presence in the community and their recognition by the community. You know, as Scott mentioned earlier, there was over four hundred high-tech, high-value employment opportunities created in those communities, which has a long-term benefit to increasing the economic value of the region. And, you know, in that, they started up more than forty companies, ten of, more than ten of which are sustainable and continuing to add employees and growing, you know, which will add to the base of their economic landscape. They also attracted significant Fortune 500 investment in the community by, you know, soliciting investment, earmarked to be able to expand employment opportunities for those graduating from tech, as well as for those students that were developing capability that could be used ultimately by those companies at a later date. They facilitated, you know, this is one of the, kind of the, one of the key things that, you know, a smart zone can do for a community. It can leverage recognition. For example, the smart zone, the M-Tech Smart Zone, has done that for several companies, and in their ten-year history, five out of the ten years, they've had companies listed in the top fifty companies in Michigan to watch, which I think is a significant accomplishment, you know, in that ten-year history of that, that smart zone. That's a, you know, as I think about it, in conclusion, and being a member of this business community and having a stake, you know, to both do it regionally as well as, you know, locally, because we are, Marquette is the center of the upper peninsula, and from that, it can be the, you know, the bit of the, the hub of the wheel. You know, what we see and what we can leverage from Houghton and Hancock through their experiences, including dealing with the complexities of all these questions about how the tax works, how the, you know, how building condemnation works, all of those things were things that they've already been through, that they can certainly help us facilitate understanding of and, you know, get through those issues. But what I can see from my involvement is that it works. This is a unique opportunity with the satellite legislation that allows us to be done effectively for this community, and it's going to support a thriving economic outcome that'll support entrepreneurs innovate, who are innovative, and create some foundation capability for company growth and job growth in this community. I'm really excited about it. I've been involved in this, in dialogue, for probably the better part of, you know, a year now with Richard and others who, you know, have a real stake in seeing this be successful for the larger region and leveraging everybody's unique gifts to be able to do that. I hope you guys heard me okay, because it's hard. I can't hear myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Joe Van Osterhout, seventeen thirteen Kildall in Marquette. I knew nothing about this, and what I've heard tonight sounds very, very reassuring and optimistic and so forth, and I really applaud them for their being forward-looking in this. But having worked for the state for twenty-five years and having seen what's happened to Pilt funding and revenue sharing and school funding, my question is, if the three dollars for every dollar we spend disappears, is the city on the hook for any contracts or liabilities with regard to that, or are the funds with the authority, all this available, and if that runs out, then that ends the liability?
Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Mr. Seeminger, we're not taking any action on this, but fellow commissioners, do you have any comments or questions of staff or comments that you'd like to make? Commissioner Ryan?
I just think it's all been very positive. I think maybe we learn a lesson with this, though. I think, number one, we've done a number of things. We've had public meetings on the smart zone, but as typically happens, no one comes to those meetings. But I think it's more a question of, we were trying to put the pieces of the puzzle together. The, the issue specifically here tonight on establishing the boundaries for, for this zone here was one piece of the puzzle, and I guess it would have been better if we could have showed people the whole puzzle, so they knew how it was fitting together. And I don't say that as a criticism. I think, you know, we all kind of learn as we go, but I think a lot of people had questions about why we were doing it, didn't have the background about the smart zone, and if we could have perhaps communicated some of that in the letter we sent to, to citizens, it probably would have been helpful. But, but again, I just think as many people have said here tonight, this is an outstanding opportunity for Marquette, and hopefully we can keep it moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Reynolds?
I have nothing really more to add to what Don said, but I agree. I had some calls about the tax paperwork they received, and I agree, it was confusing. And I went through all the paperwork myself and the smart zone and read all of that and about LDFAs, and to this point, I now understand it, and this is a positive thing for our community, but I do wish that there would have been some way to make it less confusing for people, because even when I first read it, it was confusing. So, just further note, but I am in support of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Kim Benzey?
I think, I'm certainly just learning about this, and we do have sixty days. Everything has been positive that I've heard, but I've also heard some things tonight that will make me, and I'm hoping my fellow commissioners would agree, that we need to have some, some public meetings about this. We have sixty days. I think we've heard some concerns, you know, certainly a lot of positive, but let's bring the community together on this so that we can educate ourselves and kind of maybe throw out some of the things that we think are negative, you know, look at some of the long-term effects, look at how it affects our, you know, surrounding jurisdictions. There are a lot of questions out there. If all of us got a handful of phone calls or emails about this, I think we do have some work to do. And I guess in the next two months, I'd like to see three or four community meetings where we kind of bring people together and go through this together. So, again, I think it's positive, but I appreciate everyone coming tonight and voicing your concerns and going through this with us, so that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kim Benzey. Any other commissioners? And Mayor Prokhem Stonehouse?
Just to, just to follow on that, boy, things are exciting in Marquette. And I mean, we've got really good stuff going on, and this is one of them. If you can't get excited about the smart zone and everything it can offer you, and offer us as a city, as a community, as an area, you've got to be six foot under. I mean, that's how exciting this is. And obviously, the more we can learn about it, the more we can get the public excited about it, the better it will be for all of us. Certainly, more information out to the public is a wise thing to do, and to try and put it together in the form of a, of a jigsaw, because that's what it is. But the opportunities, the dynamitism, dynamicism, rather, that it offers is just absolutely incredible, and we need to grab hold of this thing and write it for everything we can, because the benefit is, is really there. And if you want to look at things in a little wider view, we've got a power plant that's going to go away, that's our biggest taxpayer in the city. We've got a hospital that may well go away too, and we can argue that that also is a major taxpayer. So when we look at how this city will go forward, how we will maintain the momentum that we have had, it is through mechanisms like the smart zone, teaming with MSU, teaming with Michigan Tech, that will get the development we need to have in the community, the right people in the right place doing the right things. And that's why I think everybody, at least on this commission, has been so very excited about the opportunity to work the smart zone. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Coine?
Well, I have a couple of comments. I don't think people should feel badly about not understanding it. I would say it took me two months to understand what this was all about, despite people beating on me, trying to explain it to me, and reading the Act was miserable. I think the Act has one smart thing, and that is, tonight, we are required not to immediately make a motion to approve this, but we have to wait sixty days. And I think the comments of tonight, the issues that were, of concern that were raised are valid. I've had those same concerns. I've had them answered, but I've been dealing with this for months, and you guys, this is, you know, a few weeks. So I think the idea of having some other meetings is a very good idea, and it's a wise thing to do, because the concerns, even tonight, I've had some concerns answered that I was kind of... of worried about. So, I appreciate Gary's answers very much, and particularly the people coming from Houghton and Hancock to express their experience, I think was very helpful. And along with what Commissioner Stonehouse said, I've been around a long time, and economic plans are very difficult to come by, and this is one of the most exciting that I've seen in years. And I, I hope we can get some more input, and then in 60 days, on June 30th, at the commission meeting, then come to a conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Any other commissioners?
Well, hearing none, I guess I'd just like to make a brief comment. I, I agree that it's, it's a very exciting opportunity. I think this is something that I've, I've seen the Smart Zone and learned about the Smart Zone in Houghton Hancock, and I think we can, we can do equally as well in, in Marquette, and it provides us a, a real opportunity. And I guess I would echo, perhaps City Manager, we could set up some forums like we have on recycling, and at various times of days and various places, that it'll afford the citizens maximum opportunity to, to come to those forums. And perhaps they can also be televised and...
Thank you, Your Honor.
...recorded, so that we can, we can share the information.
Thank you, Your Honor. Already noted, I'd also point out that these were commission priorities from the earlier discussions, and we have four separate meetings set up coming up in the beginning of May to talk about how this effort fits in with all of the other economic development priorities of the commission. So, there'll be fertile opportunity for folks to come and become more informed on the issue.
Thank you, City Manager. Well, I guess we've, we've dispatched that item.